All habits die hard, huh?
Yes, they do. Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order, and Steve, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Fastenelli?
Present.
Councilman Pitts?
Present.
Councilman Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Racini?
Here.
Mayor Colton?
Here. To open our council meetings, we continue our tradition of inviting Villa Park distinguished citizens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are pleased that Milton Stammos has accepted our invitation. We especially like to honor our veterans as their efforts have protected our freedom, including our right to recite the pledge. Milton Stammos, Milton, would you come up to the podium, please? Milton Stammos grew up in the Bronx section of New York City and enlisted in the United States Marine Corps in 1950. Oh, you can just come to the podium, please? Oh, okay. That's great. Let me start again. Milton Stammos grew up in the Bronx section of New York City and enlisted in the United States Marine Corps in 1950. Milton served two tours in the Korean War as a machine gunner, an especially dangerous assignment, as taking out the machine gunner is one of the enemy's top objectives in combat. During his service, Milton was a recipient of the Purple Heart, and he wore his Purple Heart today to the meeting. After his discharge from the United States Marine Corps in 1954, Milton enrolled at Tulane University where he majored in accounting and finance, and then earned a degree in business administration with a master in accounting, then subsequently earned his certification as a public accountant or CPA. Milton then embarked on a successful career in accounting and finance, serving as chief auditor for Flora International before joining Santa Fe International where he became chief financial officer for worldwide construction and operations. After his corporate career, Milton became an entrepreneur, arranging financing, development, operation, and sale of the three largest car wash facilities in Southern California. Twenty years ago, he embarked on yet another career, assisting his son Chris in establishing a local CPA firm, Stammos &amp; Stammos CPAs, located a couple doors down here from City Hall. Notably, their first client was Phil Horowitz in Phil's Union 76. Stammos &amp; Stammos has now grown their client list to over 1,000. Milton and Claranelle and their four kids moved to Villa Park from Chatsworth in 1971, and since then, Stammos has become a familiar name in our community. Milton managed a baseball team in the Pony Cult League for his two oldest sons, one a pitcher and the other a catcher. Milton has been active in Rotary for the past 20 years where he supports the Meals on Wheels program, and Claranelle has been active in the Villa Park Women's League, including her as president. All four of their kids graduated from Villa Park High School, and all three of their sons played football for Villa Park High School. Their grandson, John Stammos, is also a graduate of Villa Park High School where he was a standout football player. John has been accepted to the United States Naval Academy and is now in Rhode Island completing the preparatory program. In the fall, John will be playing football for the Naval Academy. This year, Milton and his wife Claranelle are celebrating their 60th wedding anniversary. They continue to enjoy spending time with their family and friends, worshiping and participating in the Ravix social group at Covenant Presbyterian Church and residing in Villa Park. I suspect that they will also be closely following the Midshipman Football Program for the next four years. I am now honored to introduce Milton Stammos, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have a pin to award Milton, and we'll be having our picture taken with Milton.
So Mayor, while you're walking up there, I'll just report on closed session. We did have two items that's listed in the agenda which we met at starting at 5:30. One, anticipated litigation, significant exposure, and one, a public employee performance evaluation pertaining to the city manager. There's no reportable action under the law, but the council did create an ad hoc temporary subcommittee to help outline city manager performance goals, and that includes Councilman Pitts and Mayor Protem Racini. That is all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to thank all of those in the audience to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. The city clerk is Steve from the corner. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers, and speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. We now have a proclamation for the Donate Life Run Walk, and I'm excited to announce that I will be participating in an area-wide challenge with all Southern California mayors to participate in the 14th Annual Mayor-a-thon at the Donate Life Run Walk on Saturday, April 28th, 2018. The event's founders, Fulton residents Craig and Kathleen Husser, began the event 16 years ago to educate the community on the importance of organ, eye, and tissue donation. Since then, the event has achieved overwhelming success with over 12,000 participants in 2017. The purpose of the Mayor-a-thon is to challenge the mayors and officials of Southern California to participate in the event and celebrate the life-saving mission of the Donate Life California Organ and Tissue Donor Registry. One legacy in Donate Life California has chosen the Donate Life Run Walk as a signature event to promote this life-saving tool, which the California Legislature authorized in 2003 and linked to the Department of Motor Vehicles in July 2006. Over the past 11 years, the Donate Life California Donor Registry has grown to over 14 million residents making the commitment to become an organ, eye, and tissue donator. The event will encourage people to take the step that ensures their wish to save lives is honored by signing up as an organ, eye, and tissue donor via the DMV when they renew or apply for a driver's license or ID card. And it's an honor to present this proclamation in support of their life-saving mission. Is Stephanie McMacan here? Great.
Where do you want me? Up there?
I'll demonstrate the proclamation. Now therefore be resolved in recognition of the National Donate Life Month, the month of April 2018, is hereby proclaimed DMV Donate Life California Month in City Villa Park. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes for applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. I can't stress how important that program is. That program saved my father's life. He is a kidney donor recipient, I should say kidney recipient. And oddly enough, in a stroke of luck, a strange luck, just a couple years later, I became a bone marrow donor for somebody who's alive now in France. And please, everybody, check the box, get involved, try to be the match for somebody because you never know when a strange set of circumstances are going to give you the opportunity to either make a difference or be the beneficiary of somebody's unfortunate donation. Please get out there, get involved, and try to be the match. Thank you.
Yes, I'm a donor, and I encourage all of you to become donors as well.
So am I.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm here, I'm alive today because somebody gave me their daughter's liver when I was down 28 years ago, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now proceed to other presentations. The Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, ladies and gentlemen. Lieutenant Rich with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, I'd like to make a report on the Part I crimes in the month of February for the city of Villa Park. We had four Part I crimes. On February 3rd, there was a report of a laptop miscellaneous tools and cash stolen from a vehicle, unlocked vehicle, in a residential driveway. On February 8th, unsecured wheels and tires were taken from the driveway of a residence under construction in the city. On the 19th, there was a vandalism where a hole was in a chain link fence. And on the 23rd, there was a residential burglary where a picture frame was taken from a residence, believed to be a known subject known to the residents, unfortunately. On top of the value of the picture frame, there was quite a significant amount of damage done when the front door was forced open. And that is what we have for Part I crimes in the month of February.
Are there any questions of our sheriff representative? Thank you.
Thank you.
Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Protem, council members, city staff, and community. My name is Dave Spencer. I'm a battalion chief with the Orange County Fire Authority, assigned here to this area. There are two items that I'd like to bring forward before you this evening. The first is our statistical information with regard to our calls for service. This month, we've had 26 total calls for service, and with those broken out, 14 of those are for emergency medical aids, and then there were 11 that were other categorized, undetermined, or good intent type of calls. Unlike my counterpart, I can't get into the details of them because they're protected by the HIPAA laws, but safe to say that we're taking good care of your residents. The second thing I'd like to bring to your attention is, as you know, over the last 24 hours, we've seen a significant change in the weather. We are noticing that we have some sustained winds up to 15 to 20 miles an hour with some gusts around 40 miles an hour. That's not unusual for us, however, what I will tell you is what's unusual is the decrease in the humidity. And all of this is to be said that, as you know, over the last five years, there has been no end to our wildland season. And so with the threat of wildland fires, I just want to remind everyone that it is so important to be vigilant and be prepared. We have a program known as our Ready, Set, Go program, and is available on our website at ocfa.org, and it is a series of three steps, the ready, the set, and the go. And I just would encourage you at this time that you would consider that ready component, where you ready your home, you provide some clearance, and do some things now before we get into the heat of the summer, and that will help us tremendously. As you know, we've had some significant events over the recent past, and so we want to continue to encourage our community members to continue to stay diligent. And that's all I have, so I'm happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
I have some comments here.
Yes.
In conjunction with that, the city, we did host an evacuation town hall meeting last week, and it was well-attended, and we encouraged people to sign up for OC Alert, which if you live in Orange County, you sign up for it, you put it in with your ZIP code, and it will alert you when you do need to evacuate versus speculating when you need to evacuate. And one of the things they also did stress was the Ready, Set, Go, as well as having your go-bag by the door. So it's important that you brought this up because the winds did shift, and really, people weren't thinking about it because it was kind of raining and it was wet.
Right.
But today, we felt that it might come back again. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
And all the residents, if you're listening to this, the OC Alert instructions are on our website. We do have that on there, so please take a look, and if you can't find it, give a call to City Hall, and we'll help you out.
And thank you for your comments.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Now Villa Park Library.
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see you all. I'm Samantha Smith, branch manager of the Villa Park Library. This month, I'm pleased to report the following news. In regards to our library refurbishment, the furniture has been selected and finalized, and we are just now getting the finalization on the finishes and colors, and we expect to receive the new furniture, thank you to the Friends of the Villa Park Library, in approximately eight to 10 weeks. So we are excited, and we hope to coordinate an unveiling of the refurbishment with the summer reading program. So we're hoping right around June or July is when we should have everything finalized here and available to come in and look at. In regards to future programming, here at the Villa Park Library, we are already looking towards the summer. So as I mentioned, we wanted to coordinate the unveiling of the refurbishment with the summer reading program, and we're looking towards summer, and we're hoping to showcase a really great summer for everyone. We hope to see computer classes for children and adults, technology classes, genealogy programs, children's programming, and an author visit. We've already scheduled an author visit for July, and hopefully, maybe we can schedule another before that date, too. And as we get closer to summer, we hope to provide a poster of events with everything in one place so that everyone can browse the events of interest to them and their families. In regards to recent programming that we've had at the library, every week, the library hosts two storytimes, one on Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m. and one on Thursday morning at 11:00 a.m. We offer a monthly craft program on the third Wednesday of the month, and we have a monthly book club that meets on the third Wednesday of the month as well. This month, in addition to our regular programming, we had a program called Spring into E-Reading, and it was an opportunity for patrons to drop in and learn how to download digital books to their device for free from the library. And we had this every single day of last week, and we had quite a few people come in and avail of us, take advantage of the services. It was a great program, and as always, we encourage people to drop in anytime the library's open to receive assistance. You can also make a reservation or an appointment with a librarian if you know there's a date and time that you want to come in and have our full attention for an hour and learn how to do everything on your device. Feel free to come in and schedule an appointment or just drop by. We also have some exciting programming coming up in April. On April 21st, it's a Saturday, we'll be having a chess class for children, and this class is free for any school-aged child. So if you have a grandchild or child that you're interested in having attend, please do sign up. This program is free, but there is registration required because space is limited. On Tuesday, April 24th, at 11:00 a.m., we'll be showing a free webinar on the topic of preserving your family recipes. And it will be an opportunity to learn how to preserve them physically, but also to examine how the family recipes relate to our ancestry and our heritage. This free webinar is going to be presented by the American Library Association, and it's part of Preservation Week, and we'll be streaming it live here at the library on that day. So we encourage everyone to come if you have an interest in preservation or recipes. We also will be having a new face at the Villa Park Library. Starting this Saturday, we have a new employee starting. He is, his name is Freddie, and he will be here. So if anyone comes by the library and sees a new face, please say hello to him and welcome him to the library and show him what a great community this is. And that is it for my report for this month. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
I just have a comment, Samantha. I actually went into the library the other day, and your staff was amazing. They helped me with my tablet because I'm getting ready to travel, and I wanted to download some books, so they actually helped me with the application, told me how to go and find things and do things. It was a great service, so I appreciate what they did for me.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you for sharing, and I hope other people will come in and do the same.
Oh, yeah, they're more than willing. I mean, they will stay there with you as long as you need to. It was kind of cool.
Yes, yes.
I want to echo those sentiments. My family's been in there several times, and both my kids are avid readers, and I think in large part because of the influence of the Orange County Public Library system, and of course, their sister-in-law, who's a child librarian.
That's great.
My sister-in-law, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Okay, well, I move on to council member meeting and attendance reports. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District?
That would be me. First of all, at our most recent meeting, the general manager, Rick Howard, presented the high-risk Area 9 update and the 2018 work plan for the vector control. He also presented 2017 SWAT analysis. And I rode with one of the vector controls inspectors for a day, you know, here in Villa Park. It was quite interesting. He serviced unattended swimming pools and standing water at several homes in Villa Park. Some of the homes were vacant. In fact, two appeared to be completely abandoned. And in the pools, he put mosquito fish in the pools and pellets in the standing water to kill the mosquitoes. We also serviced a stagnant stream in Pellicani Park and Anaheim Hill, so it was real interesting to see what they do on a day-to-day basis. And also, Orange County Vector Control wants to remind you that recent rainfalls, coupled with anticipated warmer temperatures this week, can result in increased mosquito activity in many Orange County communities. Officials from the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District urge residents to remain diligent and continue to inspect and maintain their properties by eliminating all water-holding containers. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next committee report is Orange County Sanitation District. On February 28th, I represented the city at the Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors meeting. In addition to routine operation and maintenance issues, the board held the first hearing on a proposed ordinance to adopt regional service charges. The proposed ordinance will increase service charges approximately 1.2% annually, and the proposed increase was recommended by an independent analysis to determine the cost to operate the district's collection and treatment system. The second reading of this ordinance will be held tomorrow night at 6:00 at the Sanitation District Board meeting in Fountain Valley. On March 7th, I participated in the Orange County Sanitation District's Operations Committee meeting, and items related to the maintenance and rehabilitation of the wastewater collection and treatment system were discussed. And that concludes my report. Orange County Fire Authority?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 15th, I attended the Board of Directors meeting for the Orange County Fire Authority. The OCFA Board voted to appoint Brian Finacy as the new fire chief heading the brave men and women of the Orange County Fire Authority. Chief Finacy was previously the head of the San Diego Fire Rescue Department. He is a highly sought-after and innovative leader in the fire service. He employs technology, I should say the latest technology, including drones and fighting fires. It's a real boon for Orange County to get somebody of his caliber. The board also met and discussed several other closed-session confidential matters, and the overall meeting lasted approximately five hours and 30 minutes. It was a good night. On March 22nd, 2018, I met with Assistant Chief, excuse me, Assistant Fire Chief of Business Services Lori Zeller to discuss structural fire fund cities, of which we are, unfunded retiree obligations, and the recent grand jury watchdog report. This meeting lasted approximately one hour. Later in the evening, I attended the Board of Directors General Session Meeting for the Orange County Fire Authority, and the OCFA Board recognized the contributions of several people, including Villa Park's very own Bill Nelson. Chair Sacks and members of the executive management and several directors were extremely complimentary of Bill's involvement on the OCFA Board and other boards within Orange County. The board had a presentation regarding the, also had a presentation regarding the proposed contract for services for the city of Garden Grove. The board voted to approve the presentation of a proposed contract for fire services. The contract would save the city of Garden Grove several million dollars within the first few years and provides perhaps an even higher level of emergency services for Garden Grove, Westminster, and even the county as a whole. Again, the board met and discussed several other closed-session confidential matters, and that meeting lasted approximately four hours. Just as a reminder, the Orange County Fire Authority will be meeting this Thursday, March 29th, of which I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Orange County Library Advisory Board?
No meeting.
Budget and Finance?
No meeting.
Community Development and Public Safety?
No meeting on the community development side.
No meeting as of yet for public safety, but we will have one coming up here in April.
Okay. Human Resources?
No meeting.
City Schools Advisory?
No meeting.
Law Enforcement Advisory?
No meeting this month, but we will have one coming up in April.
Investment Advisory?
We did not have a meeting, but last time, I promise you, we would have investment policy for the new 115 trust, and it hasn't happened yet, so we expect to have it at the next meeting.
Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
We still continue to meet and discuss the Community Center project. We've had several planned renditions that we've sent back to the architect to review and take a look at some additional changes that we had suggestions for. Also, the foundation has spent quite a bit of time planning, you know, our summer and fall and winter events, and there's some suggestions for some new ideas coming up, so I think that'll be part of the meeting coming up tomorrow night. And last but not least, I have the honor tonight to present a special recognition. Rich, would you and your wife please come forward?
Rich and Deb, I'm very honored tonight to represent Mimi Walter's office and present you with this certificate of special congressional recognition. This is presented to Rich Holmer in recognition of being volunteer of the year by the City Villa Park Community Services Foundation. Congratulations on this achievement, and thank you for your many years of service. And I'd like to add not only that, but thanks from the Community Services Foundation and also from the city. I'm proud to live here. It's a wonderful place. God bless me. Thank you, Mimi, wherever you are. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to, you have a meeting tomorrow with the foundation. If maybe you can get back to us on what date the Santa Parade and the Boat Parade are because the schools have already planned, you know, the year out, and there are several groups that aren't able to participate because they have to plan their banquets and stuff, and by now, we should know when those are. Maybe you can find out those dates for us to make sure that everyone can participate because the dates get busy. Thank you.
Okay, the final report is the Friends of the Villa Park Library. On March 1st, I attended a meeting of the Friends of the Villa Park Library, and our librarian Samantha, who presented earlier, presented an update on the refurbishment of the library, recent events at the library, and the summer program, pretty much the same report that she gave to the council this evening. Okay, now is the time for public comments. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will also be provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Do you have any speakers?
I received two. The first is Donald McGuinness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for this opportunity to come before you this evening. I'm here because of my concern for traffic on Serrano between Santiago and Nichols. This has been a concern of mine for a long time. In fact, back in 2014, I sent an email to the city. I believe it was addressed, in fact, I'm sure it was addressed to the city manager, not to the city manager, but to the city engineer, and that was according to the direction of the city manager at that time. I'd just like to read it to you because it really takes into consideration everything that I've been concerned about for the last few years. Dear Mr., and I'm not sure how to pronounce the city engineer's name, so I won't try. We have lived at 9611 Villa Park, Brenmark Drive, Villa Park for We have lived at 9611 Villa Park, Brenmore Drive, Villa Park for over 40 years. I walk my dog on Serrano and Nichols in the afternoon. I did that today, as a matter of fact. I'm very concerned about the speed of most cars on Serrano and Nichols. The city has recently installed 15 mile an hour signs for which, for when the children are present, and 25 miles an hour normally. That was a couple of years ago. Neither of these signs is obeyed by most drivers. And when I say that, I mean most drivers that are driving up and down after the kids have been picked up or dropped off in the morning, because there's enough congestion there so that people really can't drive too fast. In fact, I estimate that a good many drivers exceed the speed limit by at least 15 to 20 miles per hour. There are children present until after 4:00 PM at Saraville, waiting for parents to pick them up. And by the way, I've noticed that a number of times the kids are playing ball, the ones that are left late. The early ones, that's not a problem, because most people are not driving fast then. But I've seen balls go into the street, and I haven't seen any close calls yet, but, you know, that could happen. Also, the field is regularly used for sports after school and on weekends. And by the way, I have 2 great-grandchildren that are involved in those sports, at those fields. My fear is that the barn door will be closed after the horse is out. We should not wait until a child is injured or killed. One other thing that concerns me is that some parents violate the U-turn signs, and I think that's improved, at Brenmore and Dodson. This does not seem to be serious, be serious in terms of putting people in danger. However, what does a child think when he or she sees a parent violating the law? I realize that it is difficult to have the sheriff there every day. Perhaps once a week would be sufficient. A more drastic measure would be to install speed bumps, which would dissuade those drivers using these streets to traverse Villa Park, perhaps to take Taft instead. And they do use Serrano to traverse Villa Park. I'm sure they're not, I'm sure that all the people that drive up and down Serrano are not from Villa Park. I don't have facts to indicate that, but I just don't think there are that many people in Villa Park. And a number of us are retired, and we don't even go to work anymore. I appreciate the opportunity to communicate my concerns to you. If you feel it would help, I would be pleased to address my concerns to the city council. What's I'm doing tonight? Our 2 children and 2 grandchildren attended Villa Park schools. We have 9 great, I'm sorry, we have 3 great-grandchildren attending Serrano Elementary. 2 of them are now at Saraville, and 1 is at Villa Park High School. So we're long-term residents, and we really have a feeling for this community. We love it here. Our grandson, who is opening an orthodontics office in Villa Park Shopping Center, has 2 young children, although they do not live in Villa Park at present, and since then they have bought a house in Villa Park. There is a good possibility they will be here in the future. I have a personal concern for them as well as all the children. Those 2 children of my grandson are home-schooled. However, they play ball at the ballfields there, and they're exposed to the same thing. Their parents are there to look after them, so I haven't seen any close calls. I was told that the signals that were put in here on Taft, across from the Villa Park High School, Taft and Nichols, I'm not sure about my facts, but I'm saying, think they're correct, that they were put in after 2 people were killed there. Is that true?
Yeah.
So, you know, and they had 1, and then they had another, and then they finally decided to put in the signals. I'm not suggesting signals. I don't know if there's stop signs that work. I know that speed bumps would. They don't have to be that severe. But I really believe that we need to slow down the traffic. So that's my concern. Thank you for listening, and I hope something can be done about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Lynn Berry?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. As always, I'd like to thank you for your service and dedication. My name is Lynn Berry, and I reside at 9771 Nichols Avenue. I'm a, as it may happen, is my, I'm a 20-year resident of Villa Park this coming month. I'd like to add my support to the current council's mission to identify and prioritize the long-overlooked infrastructure needs of the community. So I want to thank you for that. Today, I'm here at the request, heretofore request that the Nichols Avenue be added to the 40-plus school-adjacent streets that restrict parking during school hours. Today, I counted 27 cars parked in the bike lanes and even some on the sidewalk along Nichols Avenue. I brought my phone, if anybody wants to look at the phone, you know, look at the pictures, because pictures are, you know, show what I'm describing. Villa Park's a quiet community with few sidewalks and streetlights. In order to preserve peace and quiet in our lovely community, please place restricted parking signs on Nichols Avenue. I've spoken to both the sheriff and the principal of Villa Park High School. Both are aware of the situation and find it regretful. All agree that the cars belong to students of Villa Park High School circumventing the high school parking fees. The principal and sheriff both indicate they would be happy to enforce any parking restrictions once the city acts. For any of the city council that may be tempted to not lend their support for this parking restriction, I'd like to reinforce that Nichols Avenue is the only street adjacent to a school that is not parking restricted, the only one. And there's more than 41 parking-restricted streets in Villa Park, but I stopped counting at 41. I've been here to the city twice at least, asking for the parking restrictions to be put in place, and I was told I'd have to come here. I'm saddened I need to come hat in hand to get the city council to lend their support for this parking restriction, and I'd like to reinforce that Nichols Avenue is the only street adjacent to a school that is not restricted. I'm saddened that I have to always come and ask, and I would hope that the city council would be proactive in looking at the needs of the community and had put signs up before I came to request this. So again, I've been a 20-year resident. My daughter went through the entire school system, starting at Serrano, Saraville, and Villa Park High School. I'm a huge proponent of children and the school system in general. It is out of control, the parking situation and the commuter school situation that we have going right now with Villa Park. Less than 15% of the people that attend those schools, children that attend those schools even live in the city, and it's created a super commuter environment for this city twice a day. And I'd like you to address that if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Rich Elmer.
Rich Elmer.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. I, as all of you have read about Los Alamos and the sanctuary city situation. After having knocked on each of the doors in Villa Park twice to be elected in this city, I think I know the city well. And if you haven't put it on your agenda mentally, I'd like you to put that subject on your agenda. And I think you know which direction this city would vote if it could. So it's time for Villa Park to stand up. And my opinion.
I'd like to address that.
Yes.
Rich, thank you for your comments. I reached out to Councilman Pitts recently, and we're both in agreement with you. We're very, very concerned about Sacramento's overreach, about the fact that the US Constitution and the federal government, in large part, is being ignored. And it is very, very sad that it's come to this, but I think that a courageous act by the city of Los Alamos has paved the way for, I think, what's going to be quite a few cities in Orange County. And I would hope that the rest of the council will join me in supporting our city attorney and our city manager, looking into the possibility of drafting either legislation or even an ordinance, depending upon legal counsel's point of view, and discussing this matter in closed session. Thank you for your comments.
Well, thank you. I think, knowing Todd as I do from history here, you can't have a better leader from a legal standpoint, and I'm sure that Sacramento won't agree with whatever we do. So at the end of the day, I'm just asking that Villa Park recognize its constituents
Absolutely.
And the council recognize where we would stand if we could.
Rich, we join you, and, you know, we've had quite a few constituents come up to us and talk to us about this very, this very thing. And we've asked, I've asked the city manager and the attorney to plan something for the next council meeting.
Terrific.
Yes.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think-
With one correction, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Robbie did give, call me and ask to put this item on the next month's agenda, because it's required to have 2 people put on it. And I did agree, and he has gone to the city manager, and it will be on the agenda next month. I know that Councilman Racini did reach out to him, but we had already put that on the agenda for next month, so it's going to be there.
Well, it's nice to hear 3 minds thinking alike, and I saw the mayor shaking his head vertically. That's a good sign, too.
Yeah, I think you'll find all 5. I think that everybody in Villa Park believes that we are citizens of the United States first and residents of California second.
Well, and the whole concept of local control, which I'm sure each of you have discovered, is being taken away.
Sacramento's overreach is just beyond belief. It's out of control.
It's in the courts, it's everywhere.
Yes. Thank you.
Before you go, Rich, Rich, I just want to say, I think that Rich was well-deserved thing of the recognition they gave him recently. He's a real public servant, you know, he served here on the council, served on the Villa Park Community Services Foundation. He's a ferocious fundraiser. He twists so many arms. He's got so much money for the foundation. Just want to thank you, Rich.
Well, Bill, it's nice of you to give me an opening. Thank you very much for mentioning the raising of money, because right now we're on for something that we've called for many years. We wanted a project to be labeled 92861.
Yeah.
A zip code that everyone's familiar with. By the way, we, Bev and I have lived here long enough so that we didn't have that zip code when we started. So we didn't have our own in Villa Park. But the long story made short is, we could use the community's support right now in dollars and cents through the foundation to get this community center built, because it's a terrific plan. Granted, it's been sent back to the draft people to make something really special. And when it comes around through the foundation notices and through the newspapers, please consider joining the foundation. I hope each one of you is a member of the foundation, as an example to others. So, thanks very much, Bill.
Okay.
Thank you. Does that conclude the public comments?
That's all we've seen, yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is public hearings, and our first hearing is to, is the review to waive reading and full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is the regular monthly item that we place on the agenda to expedite the process of our council meetings. So again, we'd recommend that we waive the reading, the ordinances, and I would recommend approval.
I'll move the approval.
Second. Is there anyone here to speak at this hearing? If so, please step to the podium.
Good evening, I'm Joshua Album here, representing Verizon Wireless. Thank you for having me this evening. Does that include, I'm sorry, I had to come up, does that include item number 7?
They're separate. This is a separate item, number 3.
Okay, never mind, then I had nothing to say.
Okay. Okay, anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, thank you, council members. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Okay, if not, we have a motion, I believe, in a second, so please record your vote. Steve, would you please read the results?
That passes on a 5-0 vote, as shown behind you on the screen.
Okay. Our next hearing is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Staff, please give the staff report.
This item is the accessory dwelling unit that was heard at the February 27th city council meeting. It was continued at that time with the idea of giving the council some time for additional review. Ray, Ray Pascal's here, our planning manager, and John Douglas is here as well. In the package, you'll find a little different that was requested. This time, the last 3 pages will reflect a chart which shows the current ordinance, the proposed ordinance, where there is city discretion from the state law, and any comments that may be associated with it. I guess the best way to do that is have John or Ray lead us through any question or answers that might be of the council. This would be the first reading, by the way, of the ordinance, as I recall. So we continued the first reading, so we're still at that stage. The second reading would follow on April 24th, should the council take action.
Okay. John?
Yes, Mayor and Council, would you like me to simply respond to questions, or would you like to walk through that summary chart line by line?
Questions? Anybody have questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at page 3, item F. And this says that I am disagreeing with this item of owner occupancy required. It says either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit shall be for the exclusive occupancy of the owner of the lot and shall not be rented or leased as long as the accessory dwelling unit exists. I don't think we should be restricting our homeowners from renting their property, whether it's their main residence or their second dwelling. We have a lot of people here who own multiple properties. They own 4, 5, and 6 properties, and they do rent them. The fact that they have a second home on there, I think this really is very, it's just very restrictive. We have large properties. I'm not quite sure, I realize this was in the original document, we discussed this last time, but I would like to see this change, that owner occupancy is not required. These are, it's a separate dwelling unit. It's not a separate address, and we shouldn't be restricting the rights of our, of the homeowner, especially if they don't even live here. So they may not live in the main house, but you're saying they can't rent the second house. So that's just my comments on that particular issue right now, if there's any discussion from the council.
Yeah, I would agree with you on even just deleting item F. I think we could have some unintended consequences. For example, let's say somebody builds a accessory dwelling unit and then gets a temporary transfer, let's say for a couple of years, they wouldn't be able to rent out either their primary residence or the second residence without their presence. So it's, I think this is something that could become problematic and is unnecessary.
My concern, my concern is if it's not the owner, and you have someone renting, and then they just have very little discretion because it's not their home, and they're renting the back park, that you get too far removed from the ownership of the property and allowing people to live in whatever situation they want to. That's my concern for keeping it in there, just so you know.
I think it would diminish investment, your investment value, though, in your home, because you have a home, you have a granny flat. Now, even if you want to sell it, your value's been diminished. I understand your concern, and that's a concern any time-
I could, I could see it turning into a party house, and there's be no monitoring of it, because the people that rent there don't own. They don't have any, you know, and then you have neighbors all up at ours because there's things going on there.
Well, we have a lot, I mean, we have a tremendous amount of renters in the city, a tremendous amount of renters in the city. So I think that the ordinance, apart, you know, a, somebody who's not up to our codes is going to be turned in, just as whether they're a renter or not. You still contact the owner, and the owner gets fined. We've done it before. We have out-of-state owners all over the city, and they're fined. I don't think the renters are any, any worse, but I understand your concern. But the value of our property would be diminished if we were not able to utilize the property.
I'm not saying restrict the dwelling unit. I'm just saying restrict who gets to rent that dwelling unit. That's my only concern.
The primary, the owner has to rent the property.
Yes, yes.
Well, he's the owner of the property, you know.
That's, that's my-
Only the owner can rent-
Yeah. Legally, only the owner can rent it, anyway. Illegally, we can't, we can't say anything about that.
Well, no, it depends, the lease agreement. If you have a lease agreement for the total, totality of the property, including the ADU, then you could sublet it.
Yep.
Theoretically, but, you know.
Theoretically.
There is discretion under the law how we structure that. So whatever policy direction of-
I mean, I don't want, the last thing I want to do is put restrictions on Villa Park residents in any way, shape, or form, because I, that just, that's not good. I want people to be able to live the way they want to, within reason. But I'm just concerned that, you know, you get this, how do you say it, chain link, not chain link, but you, chain reaction when you allow subletting and things like that to go on. So that's my only concern.
Is there a way that we could modify this provision to specify that the owner of the property has to maintain a direct- Is there a way that we could modify this provision to specify that the, the owner of the property has to maintain a direct lease or leasy relationship with a property?
Mr. Mayor, but a scenario would be if I rent the home to my, you know, I'm, I'm retired, and if I'm so lucky to, you know, own a home somewhere in Palm Desert, then, and I rent it to my children, I would allow, I would, if they want to rent the guest room or the cabana, I would allow them to. I don't want to restrict our, my, my homeownership.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not restricting your children. What I'm restricting is someone else who is not part of, and that's not a family member, who is renting the front house and sublets the back house.
But there's no distinction on the lease, whether you're a family member or not. He's still a leasy. I could still evict, you evict family members.
I'd just like approval from the homeowner and, and an agreement between the homeowner and, and both pieces of property. That way, you don't get potential undesirables in the back part. That's all.
It's just, I think, the beginning of rent ordinances. And we haven't had that here. I don't think we have an issue, but I respect your opinion.
Well, just for clarify, we have that, it's in the ordinance right now.
Right, and we're trying to get, we didn't, we know that was there.
Removal of item F is what you're suggesting.
I think that if people found out this was there, they don't know this was there. Well, we didn't know it was there. We didn't know it was there either. You know, we have a lot of renters in here. Our property values, if you have a, if you do have a second dwelling unit, will diminish. I mean, who are we to say who you can rent it to? It's just, you know.
I'm not understanding why it would diminish the value of the property, because we put restriction on, on the homeowner saying who rents that back property.
So you rent it to a family who has, who has parents living in your, in the back. The parents die, and they want to rent the back end, and they can't. The renters are not allowed to find new people for, for the back end. I think we're assuming the worst, that you're going to have, that renters are going to be worse neighbors. And we know that's not the case, because Villa Park has a lot of renters. We know it.
Well, if there's any way to, to make this so it's not restrictive to a certain degree, but also at the same time restrict that second sublet or whatever. I'm not sure if there's any way to rewrite that or whatever.
Yeah, so you can't restrict who somebody leases property to. It's alienation of property. It's a property right, whatever. But you can put structures in which control who does the leasing. And there is still discretion under the law that if you want, and this is how I understood Councilmember Pitt's question, John, correct me if you disagree. You want the actual fee owner, the property owner, to be the one who at least has a consent as to who, if there's separate leases, who the second back portion gets leased to. So it's not as to who, but the procedure for leasing is what I think you're getting at, which is permissible if the council deems that a good public policy decision.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? I also have a question about, let's see, the short-term rental requirements. Let me, oh, yeah, item L. Says, short-term rental, no portion of a property containing an accessory unit may be rented for a term of less than 30 days. Now, do we have any limitations on short-term rentals currently?
That came before the council, what, two years ago, a year ago, and we, we denied any restrictions on that, yeah. And it, we had good discussion about it. It was unanimous, actually.
Just wanted to, yeah, clarify. Why would we impose or eliminate a homeowner's ability or freedom to have short-term rentals if we don't on other property owners?
The council has discretion to, to delete that provision or to keep it. It's, it's.
That was that, that was something that was in there?
Airbnbs?
No, that's, that's a change from the existing ordinance.
And I believe that several cities, correct me if I'm wrong, have gone, because, for instance, Anaheim has now eliminated short-term rentals because the situation such as down by Disneyland, where short-term rentals have become a nuisance for the city. So the way to deal with that would be because people are attracted to go to Disneyland or whatever. So people come and go, parties, three night, you know, whatever the case may be. So I think putting it in there, I mean, it's a discretionary item, but I think the reason it was put in there is because of what some other cities have experienced, and they have proceeded to impose that for that very reason. Otherwise, you have new people coming in every weekend, and by the time you eventually catch up with them, they're gone, and somebody else is in there, and that type of thing. So it has become a short-term rental operation in Anaheim, became a lot of the, a lot of the neighborhoods around Disneyland became short-term rentals.
But it goes against what the council has, you know, has deemed that we, we didn't want to do this. So it does go against what we unanimously said we didn't want to do. And we don't have that issue. And I realize Anaheim has it with it. Every city has a lot of problems.
We do have, we do have some VRBOs and, or BOs in, in Villa Park, yes. We do that for sure.
We do, and it's not an issue.
I don't, I bet those are short-term rentals.
Correct.
And those very much, that is an increasing industry, if you will. So we're seeing more and more of that in Villa Park.
And once again, is it an issue for the city? We haven't had any issues with that for, we haven't. So why would we?
It is starting to creep up on the code enforcement chart of issues where things are happening, where people are coming in, et cetera. We're getting complaints from neighbors.
I'd like to see that documentation before that.
It's starting to creep up. It's not a pervasive problem. It's just they, we can tell where they are. So, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So just for clarification, I know you understand this. So this would only prohibit VRBOs, short-term rentals, on properties that have an accessory unit.
Correct.
So it's a little bit different than the citywide allowance, because here you have a unique situation where you have a unit in the back. Maybe people will rent that out more freely, right, to weekend rentals. As to the bigger issue, I mean, the city manager's already spoken to it. Cities are all over the place as to how they're dealing with this. So like, there's the Anaheim situation. A lot of beach communities don't want it. I mean, the argument is it ruins communities, because you don't know who your neighbors are. So there's potential public safety issues, because, I mean, if you have small kids, and every weekend there's somebody new living next to you, some people are concerned about that. Other people see it as a property rights issue. Hey, it's my house. I should be able to rent it if I want to. So, and Yorba Linda, if you know, I'm also city attorney, Yorba Linda allows them, and we treat them like hotels, and we audit them, and we find out when they have people. There's this awesome company that can do scary things on the internet, note to self. And so we can find them and make them pay our TOT, our hotel tax. So there's some revenue generation. But it's all a policy issue for the council, really.
I think I, I lean towards the property, maintaining our property rights issue, since we haven't had an issue. And with the council that meets once a month, if certainly if we ever had any issues, we could take care of it in a quicker manner, but, or we're restricting the use here.
I'm concerned about the creep that, Steve, you're, you're mentioning. I have some very serious concerns about that kind of problem becoming worse and worse and worse with the popularity of, of events around central Orange County, whether it's Disneyland or something else. And if it's the advice of our consultant that we keep it in there, and/or perhaps our city attorney, I think we should take a minute and think about that. I do appreciate your rights, I mean, your, your opinion about property rights, but it doesn't seem like it's a significant infringement, so significant that it would be prohibitive at this time.
I would like to see a list, though. If, I'm not, we've never seen a complaint about this. We haven't. So I'd like to see complaints. I mean, it's.
I can personally attest that last week I had somebody come in who was looking at the property to purchase, and it had an AD, accessory dwelling unit. And they asked if there was any prohibition against VRBOs in Villa Park.
Okay, so they asked a question. As an investor, they asked a question.
They asked a question, and that is, you know, I kind of cringed. There is no provision that restricts it for the rest of Villa Park. And this is the only item that would reflect it. So.
So asking the question is not, to me, not enough to restrict our rights.
Right. And I've just, it is a discretionary item of that, but it is something that comes up.
It's just another step in restricting our, and our rights, I feel.
Has the sheriff's department weighed in on any party calls or anything like that?
They've just simply been, any, we have one issue where there was a code enforcement issue, but that was simply remedied very quickly. But again, when you have a, a real estate agent coming to you and saying, do you restrict VRBOs, that's not because they aren't intending to use them there. That's because they intend to do it potentially.
You're concerned about the red flag.
Pursuing options. So that's, I just offer that as, as a consideration. This is an item that we can certainly come back and address at any time, like the councilwoman suggests. That 30 days from now, you want to come back and say, oh, it's become a problem, let's add it.
If I can just address the code enforcements, as long as we've been up here, all code enforcements have been homeowners. We've not had a code enforcement issue with a renter. I mean, right now, the people that were, you know, that were taking a court are, are homeowners.
Well, except Chapman, the, the students that came over from Chapman that were in the fraternity.
We always.
That was a trash can issue. So that was somebody leaving a trash can out, which is the code enforcement. That one was the owner.
Parties, there was a little bit more than just that.
We took them to court for the trash can, because they left the trash cans out too long. That's the reason why we, we lean on our property. But, you know, code enforcement.
We would always deal with the code enforcement with the owner, with, with the registered owner. We wouldn't go with the renter. That's not our responsibility to track down renters or whatever. So if a code enforcement issue comes up, we always notify the owner, because that's who would pay, pay the lien or whatever the case may be. So.
The last four code enforcements that we've had in the last two years have all been homeowners who live there.
Yep.
And they've not been renters.
John, I have a question. I appreciate that you provided the, the table in the back, but it's not real clear to me. The two items that we just discussed, 4F and 4I, I believe were not mandated by the state accessory dwelling unit ordinance? So these were in addition to the state mandate?
Yeah, let me clarify. In the state code, there is a provision, the default, if you will, the default state law does have a provision that requires cities to allow an ADU to be rented, either one or the other, either the primary home. So, so that's a requirement. What's discretionary for the city is to allow both the units to be rented if the city, the council believes that that's in the interest of the city. With regard to the short-term?
So just to clarify on that point.
Yes.
So the requirement that, that was proposed, that both, that one of the two units be occupied by the owner of the property, that goes beyond the state mandate, correct?
No, allowing one of the two to be rented is consistent with the state mandate.
Correct, but to require both to be rented, or to allow both to be rented?
To allow both to be rented. That's open to the discretion of the council. The, the state law does not.
You're missing my question. My question is, are we going beyond what the state, weren't we going beyond what the state mandated? I mean, the state would have allowed both units to be rented, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the state mandate does not require any prohibitions on short-term rentals such as proposed in 22.4.4I?
No, the state default is completely silent on the issue of the term of the rent.
Are there any other requirements in the proposed ordinance where we have gone, where you've gone beyond what the state mandate is?
In other words, being more restrictive than the state?
Being more restrictive than the.
No, this has been drafted in order to comply with the state mandate.
And, and I would offer, too, that John is not, the ordinance proposed does, it, it currently says that owner occupancy is required. So that's not something new that he's proposing here. That's current provision of law in, in city ordinances. So what John's offering here, he did not go anything further than what we already have on the books. So for clarification, I think that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, I mean, he didn't go further than we need to, because that was already on the book, so he didn't go back and readdress it. I guess that's the point.
Okay, so 22.4.4F is current with our, in our current ordinance? I understand you correctly?
Same ownership required? Is that the section you're looking at?
That.
Yes.
Owner occupancy required, I'm sorry.
I, I think what you're saying is, was F consistent with our current?
Yes.
Yes, it is. It's reworded slightly to address the language, but it is concurrent, it's current with, it's consistent with our current code, which I think we talked about before. I think Councilwoman Fassnelli has suggested she didn't realize that and suggested it might be more appropriate to remove it, if I don't mean to speak.
That's, that's correct, that we were not, we were not aware this was in here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do any other councilmen have any questions?
I would agree that we should remove the restrictions on these, on both of those restrictions. I don't think we should restrict the way people use their property.
As a point of just process, this is the first reading, so you could give us direction that the ordinance come back with those amendments? And the second reading could still be heard on April 24th, providing there is a majority vote by the council of giving us that direction. Is that correct? That is correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll move that we remove those two restrictions, give staff direction to remove those two restrictions.
We need to check, to recheck for public hearings.
Oh, public, okay.
Any public hearing. If there's any public hearings.
Public comments.
Is there any public comment? Yes.
Hi, it's me, Jen. I'm Mary at Nichols. We have a situation on the Jason Street, I think it's Oakwood, where 14 or 15 years ago, the property owner came to me and said, geez, we want to build a granny shack for our elderly parents to live in. And don't worry about it. It's going to be great. So we said, okay, that sounds good. And I was aware that you had to live in one. And then what happened almost immediately, unfortunately, for the family, is that the parents never really moved in, and we got some renters. And over the course of the last 14 or 15 years, we've had some really interesting characters that have rented in there. I don't think that I had a situation where I didn't either go to the front of the house and talk to the, the owner and say, gosh, you know, that guy's running around, you know, with his underwear, in his underwear in front of my child, that kind of stuff, you know, smoking, chain smoking, wandering around, just weird stuff, you know. Nothing I think anybody needs to be arrested for, but certainly not in keeping with the Villa Park community. And then all of a sudden, you know, I had another, so they had another renter in, and they started acting strangely, yelling and screaming in the middle of the night. And I went and I knocked on the door of the owner, and they no longer live there. So I do think that there are issues. Whether or not it involves the police, or it involves us coming and talking to the city manager, those things do occur. And I always felt kind of good at the fact that at least he was there to call or walk over and say, hey, you know, your renters are acting up. Can you quiet them down? If you, and that is the reason why I voted for it, or said, yeah, I don't object to you getting a granny shack. There's probably a lot of people in Villa Park over the years that think that they can walk up to their neighbor and say, hey, you know, the people in your granny shack are acting up, they're noisy, they're whatever. And if, if there's no one there, what do you do? Are you forced to call the police? I mean, I, I just, I've had that situation in my neighborhood, and I can tell you that we have had issues over the years. And to say there's been never an issue with a renter, or never an issue with a neighbor, that's not really true. And I, I, I kind of have to think about it, because I do agree that from a, from a property owner's standpoint, you should be able to rent out your place. But there's no real good way to get a hold of the owner if you think the owner's there and you find out the owner doesn't live there. And I said, well, how come that, that owner doesn't live there anymore? Well, she lies. Supposedly, her son lives there. So there's ways of circumventing all this kind of stuff. Same with, you know, Airbnb or VRBO. Putting a 30-day restriction on folks, they'll just rent for one day, and that's a 30-day period, then they'll rent to another person, and that's another 30-day period. So I think we need to think about this a little bit. And would people have voted to have granny shacks in their, in, you know, on their street or an adjacent street if they knew that there wasn't going to be somebody they could call or, you know, go to in the event that the, the renter is not, you know, is noisy, is, is getting, you know, doing weird stuff? You know, that's the part of the whole community thing, is you can go, hey, you know, your son is, you know, out of control. Can you kind of quiet him down? Or, you know, your renter is doing this. Can you quiet him down? And that typically works. But in this day and age, I don't know, you know. It, there's no one to call. And are we supposed to be calling the police every time? You know, that's not a good neighbor policy either. I just think that removing an ordinance that some of us relied on when we allowed, or we didn't come to the city council and object to people building granny shacks without a public hearing, which I'm glad to hear that we're having, I think it's important that people get to weigh in on that. And I have problems with my renters. So, you know, running around in your underpants, chain smoking in the middle of the night, yelling and screaming, those are things we don't want in Villa Park. And they're pretty unusual. And you do get them sometimes with renters. Now, I can't say over the last 14 years that all of the renters have been bad, but I can tell you that a number of them happen. And they, they certainly don't sometimes have the same skin in the game with, when they're renting. You know, they don't care if they leave trash. They don't care if they, where they park. They don't care if they're, you know, obstructing justice, not obstructing justice, that's the word. They don't care if they're, you know, obstructing justice, not obstructing justice is the word, making noise, you know? There's just not the same skin in the game as if it's your own home. So, I'm sorry, I came, I hardly ever come, but I usually talk when I do. But thank you for allowing me to comment on that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay. Um, I believe you've got a motion on the table?
Well, I'm going to take them one at a time rather than the two of them. First, I'll make a motion that we remove the restriction on, uh, number F about the rental part.
So, that would be clarification, that would be to, uh, simply remove or strike F, owner occupancy required.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay. Um, please record your vote.
That passes on a four to one vote with Councilman Pitts voting no.
Okay. Um, Councilman Nelson, do you have a, another motion on?
Yeah, the second one was the, regarding the 30-day requirement.
That's short-term rental, item L.
Yeah, to remove the, to allow short-term rentals, I guess is the way to put it.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay, to allow short-term, okay.
So, that would again be to remove item L-
Correct.
From the, strike item L from the draft ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. Um, you have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, please record your vote.
That passes on a four to one vote with Councilman, uh, Mayor Protem Rosini voting no. So, at this point, the draft now excludes item F and item L. So, just so, the way that was structured, we should really have a motion now on the ordinance with those two items restricted.
I make that motion then. I make the motion, uh, without the items F and I, uh, for the first reading and to come back for a second reading without those two items.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Please record your vote.
That passes on a five oh vote, so this will be back on the agenda for the second reading on April 24th.
Okay. Okay, um, I guess we can move on now. I'd like to take the next three, uh-
Well, if I could offer an, we could, just out of, of, of preference here, if we could take item number seven, which is the draft ordinance, wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance first, because I think that provides a context for dealing with number six and number five. Uh, and we also have a public speaker on number seven, so it's your, this would be your, when, when the appropriate time is when he calls you up. This would be your time to speak.
Ready, set?
Hold it! Okay, then. Our next hearing is the wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance. And, uh, staff, please provide the staff report.
This is a follow-up to the original, uh, we had, uh, some months ago, I can't recall the exact month, but the, we had a, uh, CUP that came forward. And at that time, the CDC requested that, uh, we, um, talk through and have a master, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, for the city and that we also have a master plan for the city, uh, before we process those two. So, this item, when it came to, this item and the CUP, that, sorry, the two CUPs that are number five and six came to the agenda last month, uh, we continued that first, uh, the discussion of the CUPs, uh, to allow us time to work on those. This is the fir, would be the first reading of a draft ordinance that I'll let Ray go walk through, Ray Pascal walk through. But this would fulfill the first portion of what was requested. I would also like to report that we are working with five bars on a master plan, uh, that we would expect to come back forward to the council on April 24th. In time, should the, the council take action with this ordinance, they would come back simultaneous, thereby fulfilling both requirements of the CDC to address the CUPs. If that makes sense, I've used a lot of acronyms and I apologize. But basically, uh, it's trying to bring this all into sync. So, in context, this is one half of the request from the CDC. I'll let Ray go into detail of what that basically refers to. And when the time is appropriate, Mr. Alba from, uh, would like to speak on this item as well. Okay?
Hey, Ray?
Thank you, Steve. Uh, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The ordinance before you this evening is prepared to ensure that wireless telecommunications facilities in the city will comply with all applicable health and safety regulations as well as with design standards that they can blend into the environment to the greatest extent possible. It is intended to be a comprehensive ordinance that applies to all types of wireless facilities, including those that are located on private and public property, uh, or within the public right-of-way. This ordinance does not include provisions for other wireless uses such as amateur radio antennas, satellite dishes, and, and those types of facilities, as these types of facilities are subject to different federal and state regulations. Included as part of this ordinance are code sections that provide permit requirements, uh, specific findings for granting approvals for permits, requirements for wireless facilities outside and within the public right-of-way, design and location guidelines, operation and maintenance standards, and standard conditions of approval. In light of the submittals of the, uh, CUPs for the small cell facilities, um, as well as the previous CUP that was approved, uh, late last year, uh, City Council directed staff to draft this ordinance so that there are standards and regulations in place that we can use to consistently, uh, review these types of, uh, applications. This ordinance, uh, in and of itself will not have any significant effect on the environment, therefore is not subject to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. Public hearing notices were posted at City Hall. Uh, on the city's website, it's also published in the, uh, Orange County Register. And to date, city staff and city council received an email from a law firm, uh, representing Verizon Wireless, uh, requesting that this item be continued to allow city staff additional time to review certain code sections that were cited of the draft ordinance that may not align with state and federal law, um, specifically related to wireless telecommunications facilities. At this time, I'll, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council members, do you have any questions to staff?
You know, Mayor, if I just may hop in and piggyback off what Ray said, I did receive that letter from Paul Allbritton. He's Verizon's attorney out of San Fran, nice guy. Disagree with majority of his letter. Admittedly, and I think we talked about this last time, there is some gray area in what can happen in the public right-of-way. Uh, I take the position, I think the law supports that we can still require CUP. We can have some discretionary aesthetic review, things of that nature, which the ordinance allows. Verizon takes a different approach to that. Uh, I disagree with that. But there are cases moving through the system that may answer those questions next week, next month, next year, most likely in 10 years, the way it works. So, um, but I think we're okay with the ordinance as it is. But if you wish further time and, you know, like, we can talk to Verizon and maybe some tweaks can be allowed, but, um, I don't think it is necessary at this point in time.
Okay. Any questions from, uh, the council?
Mr. Alba's available to-
Okay, is there anyone here to speak at the hearing?
Evening, council members again. Uh, my name is Joshua Alba. Um, I represent Verizon Wireless, so I'm here representing them. Uh, item seven got moved before, what, five and six, which kind of messed up my notes over here, by the way. But, um, but I really just wanted to come up, um, I think these things were kind of already mentioned. Really, I was only going to read part of this letter on behalf of Verizon's legal counsel, um, which I believe, uh, Mayor Calacot, Mayor Protem Rosini, and the council, I, I believe you guys did receive this. Okay. Um, I would just ask that this does get continued and that you read through this. I think they have, um, some very good points. And I just would encourage that, uh, we have more of a thorough discussion, um, of what state and federal law actually does allow, um, for small cell. So, I would just ask that this does continue to the next hearing, um, on behalf of Verizon Wireless in regards to item number seven.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, uh, any other, uh, public comment? Okay, uh, council members, is there any discussion regarding this item?
Todd, is it, uh, your opinion that this matter should be continued?
Uh, no. Uh, I will also say, like I intimated, there's never certainty in the law and I don't think we will have any more certainty in a month.
Okay. Thank you.
And, uh-
Uh, I would propose that we pass this tonight and direct staff to work with Verizon and the industry to work out any, uh, things that they have that, that may be in conflict.
I'll second that.
This is, for clarification, this is the first, uh, reading.
Right.
So, uh, by passing this, you would set the stage for the second reading on April 24th. In the event that we were to meet with them as suggested and come back with a changed wording, we would have to revisit the first reading and have a second reading, which is, again, is appropriate. But I think, uh, this was also setting the stage for item number five and six-
Right.
The approval. So, uh, that could potentially have impacts, at least on your consideration of those, should that be an issue that the, like, the members of the CDC had requested that that would be, uh, an ordinance would be in place-
Mm-hmm.
And that we would have that. So, I, I just offer that as sort of in context and, and remind the council that we've sort of been operating on this track to get to a point.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion that the ordinance, um, be passed as written.
Second. That'd be what?
That it be passed as written.
Passed as this? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, the substitute motion is, uh, on the floor. Uh, can you please record your vote?
That passes on a three to two with Councilman Nelson and Mayor Protem Rosini voting no. So, the item passes. This would be the, second reading would come back April 24th. So, at this point, we've set the stage for the second reading. Now, we would go back to five and six, with that, sort of now you have the context. Item number five and six both came to the council. I would actually request those, uh, two CUPs, uh, CUP 2018-01 and CUP 2018-02, uh, for, just for the record. Uh, but those items came back into the council in, came to the council originally in Janu, in February. Uh, they were continued, the discussion was continued to allow us to move forward on this. Uh, I will, uh, let Ray talk about this, but there is, I, I want to make sure that either Ray or Todd have an opportunity just to clarify the shot clock timeframe here. We have that context and they can explain what that means. So, one of the two of you gets to explain that.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, um, there, uh, since the last City Council meeting, um, with respect to these two conditional use permits, there weren't any, uh, changes to the project. It remains the same as it was when it was first proposed to City Council at the last City Council meeting. Uh, we, we are running into, uh, the shot clock rule. I feel a lot more comfortable with Todd, if you could weigh in on that and, uh-
Smart man. Very smart man.
So, under federal law, it's basically a rule that says, you know, it's a speeding up the process rule, that once a city gets a completed application, city has to take action on it with X, within X period of days. In telecommunications world, there's either a 90-day or I believe it's a 150-day, depending upon what type of cellular facility, cellular facility that it is. Verizon argues that because this is a small cell site on an existing pole, that the 90-day kicks in, uh, once their application was their complete, was complete, their application was complete, last day of February, I believe.
Will be May 2nd, the 90-day.
So, it would be May 2nd. So, if we were to not take action before then, arguably, because I'm being recorded, arguably, their application would be deemed approved, no matter what you all did, as a matter of law. So, we have potentially a certain deadline by which we have to take action, or there are ramifications there too. And that's under federal law and it's, it's incorporated in large part under state law as well. So, with that being said, given the timeframe of the ordinance and trying to do it, my recommendation is that item number five and six be continued until the April 24th meeting.
I'd make that motion.
And we can then have that in package in time and we would still have taken actions prior to the, uh, May 2nd shot clock timeframe.
Second.
Do we need to take them individually?
Yes, we would take votes on item number-
Same, same motion for both, just one at a time.
He, he could speak, the public, he wants to-
Oh, we gotta let him speak.
Sorry, I didn't speak. I don't think we had a card for public to speak.
No, I didn't.
But, we don't-
Well, unfortunately, you guys have to hear my voice one more time. Again, this is Joshua Alba, represent Verizon Wireless. Good evening, council members. You know, just a couple of things I wanted to note as well. I didn't come up and speak last time, um, only because I was hoping for questions, but they didn't come. I do want to clarify a few things. One thing was said that, uh, something about SCE owning these poles. I just wanted to clarify that, uh, this, this, both of these projects, the pole owner is actually Southern California Joint Pole Association. And, um, Verizon Wireless is a part of that association. And we have approvals to be on these poles. So, essentially, we are actually owners as well of these poles. So, it's SCE is of owner, Verizon Wireless is the owner, AT&amp;T is an owner. There's several owners a part of joint pole. So, SCE actually does not own this pole. Uh, they did set the pole, um, but it's jointly owned by several, um, telecommunications or communications, uh, companies. So, I just wanted to-
Does SCE get a royalty, uh, at all?
No. No, it goes, uh, it's, it's, it's the joint pole and it's like, it's an association, it goes straight to the association.
So, the, the association receives a royalty?
Something along those lines, like a lease kind of deal or-
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's something that they all pay into-
Okay.
Um, as long as they're on the pole.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to, I wanted to clarify that because I, I believe it was, um, it was just said that SCE owned it and there was just a confusion there.
The name of the, who owns it?
Joint, Southern California Joint Pole Association.
Thank you.
Um, and then, the other thing was, I was going to ask, uh, that you guys consider approving these projects instead of continuing them. Um, and just for a couple of reasons. Uh, one of them was that the ordinance, we felt, wasn't ready yet, but that's, we already, we already discussed that portion. Two is, uh, you know, when we were here at the CDC, I believe in August of last year, uh, Mayor Protem, I don't, I don't believe you were Mayor Protem at the time, but you were here, um, and, and Mayor Rose, uh, Colacot, is that, is that right? Sorry, I'm, uh, you were there as well. And you guys asked that we provide a site, uh, analysis, um, and come back to another CDC sometime in the future. Well, we did that and, and what that site analysis basically explained is why the other poles in the immediate area were not usable. Um, and I provided that to Ray. Um, I know he, I believe he presented that, or I don't know if they presented the actual documents, but something was presented at that time. So, um, so we did that and then, when we came back, we were also asked to get rid of our meter pedestal and do a, something called a WTR, which is like a manhole in the street, which basically takes away any kind of obstruction or something that might be, you know, near a driveway or something along those lines. So, we also did that as well and revised our, our plans, um, per your guys' request on two different things. So, with that in mind, um, I also have, uh, this project, or these two projects are identical, um, to a, a project that you guys had already approved in January. Um, so I just want to make sure you guys do understand that this, something similar to this was just approved in January. So, I just would hope that the same, um, I guess, continuity would apply to these two sites as well. Um, and then the last thing is, you know, the only thing in your guys' ordinance that I can personally find, and maybe you guys can correct me, um, that regards construction and/or maintenance in the public right-of-way is Article 175. maintenance in the public right-of-way is Article 175. And basically, it's procedure for construction and maintenance of encroachments in the public right-of-way, and it basically just says that we need to get an encroachment permit for any construction or maintenance in the public right-of-way. And this is per your guys' ordinance, per City of Villa Park's ordinance. We went through this process in the beginning, because we actually came in with the idea that we were just going to apply for an encroachment permit. The reason why we even started this process in the first place was frankly out of respect for these two men right here, which we do have a lot of respect for, by the way. And they asked that we take this to council, because that's what you guys would prefer moving forward. So, and with respect to them, we brought this to council, even though there was nothing, I guess, in the code ordinance that required us to do it, to do work in the public right-of-way. At this point, you know, the shot clock was mentioned, and that was my last point, was, you know, the shot clock will expire, I believe, May 1st?
Second.
Second, okay. May 2nd, and then will be considered approved by default before this, by default before the ordinance actually goes into place. So with that in mind, I just was hoping that you would reconsider, instead of continuing approving these two projects, knowing that any future projects will be under any said ordinance that gets put into place at, you know, whenever time that is. And mainly because it's really, it's just the exact same project that you guys already approved in January. And, you know, we obliged to both of your guys' requests in the meter pedestal and the site, and all, site analysis, so we feel like we've done everything we've been asked of, yet we're still being asked to be continued, you know, to wait for the, for the ordinance. So that's really all I have to say this time, and I thank you for your time. That's it.
I would just offer that the council would take action on April 24th, which would be prior to the shot clock expiration under, as proposed to come back. So while the adoption, the formal adoption of the ordinance would have already taken place, it wouldn't take effect, but the adoption would have taken place, which was one of the requests of the council. So I just, for point of clarification. And there's rules pertaining in that procedural situation, what happens, they'd be governed by the ordinance, even though it's not taking effect, because it's a land use decision, but that wouldn't be pertinent if everything is approved. So. And just for the record, so the minutes reflect, Councilman Pitts had to leave, he has a flight, apparently. He has a flight, so. So no offense. Prearranged a, and indicated to the mayor, myself, that he had to leave at 8:00 this evening, so I just, for the record, Councilman Pitts.
I would still make the same motion, but I would hope for another second, since my second disappeared.
Yeah, true.
Understandably so.
I will second your first motion, which is on item number five.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, please indicate your vote.
That passes on a four to vote, with Councilman Pitts being absent. Now, we would need a same, similar type of motion for number six.
Same motion, please.
I will second the motion to continue item number six also.
Any discussion? Hearing done, please cast your vote.
That also passes on a four to zip vote, with Councilman Pitts being absent.
Okay, thank you. Well, Carol, last hearing is the Safe and Sane Fireworks Sales. Staff, please give your staff report.
This is the, I'm sorry, the second, swallowing there, second reading of the Safe and Sane Fireworks Ordinance Update. This is heard and approved by the council on February 27th. At that time, the council took action to, basically, the ordinance remove, lessens number of days. The only real significant change is it lessens the number of days for sales. So it, it becomes July, June 30th, July 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, the date would be for sale. The ordinance removes June 28th and 29th from the previous ordinance. So with, this would be the second reading. With approval tonight, the action would take effect 30 days from now, which would be right in sync with the time that the applications for the permit this coming year are due April 1st. So it would be approval in time such that we're good to go.
Applications are due April 1st?
Huh?
Applications are due April 1st?
They could start providing.
Okay, but the deadline is what, like April, is it?
April 30th.
April 30th, okay.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
No.
Is there anyone here to speak at the hearing? Okay, hearing done. Is there, is there a motion on this matter?
I move it.
Second.
I have one question before you vote. Can these second readings be put on the consent agenda?
No, they are public hearings.
They're public.
No, the second, actually, the second readings can be put on consent.
Oh, okay.
I mean, most cities, they do. The only type that can't are, if there's an odd quirk in the law, when you're incorporating a different jurisdictions, like the county's rules, like we did for animal control.
Yeah.
They reverse it. They say you have the first one on consent, and the second one's a public hearing. City, there's no requirement that there be a public hearing either under the first reading or the second reading.
Okay.
But as a matter of practice, usually because it's for open discussion, if it's an ordinance, you put the first one on, administrative reports, public hearing, the second one on consent.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Steve, please read the results.
That passes on a four zero vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the City Council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Just for clarification, that includes items number nine through 14 tonight.
Hearing done. Is there a motion to approve the ballot, the consent calendar?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. Steve, please, would you read the results?
That passes with a four to zero vote.
Okay. Okay, now we move on to new business. Our first item of new business is the authorization to file a claim in order to go to small claims court. Staff, please give the staff report.
This goes back to action that happened in accident, a non-injury traffic collision that happened in October of 2017. As stated in the sheriff's report at the time, the driver was reaching for a cellphone, lost control of the vehicle, amounting to, hitting our trail post, amounting to approximately $4,926 worth of damage. We are dealing with the insurance company, and we received AAA, has indicated that they will pay, and have paid us $848.55, which is a far cry less than the damage received. Clearly, this was a, this, the damage occurred as a result of this accident. It was even stated so in the report. So we are, our only recourse, basically, the, we sent a letter to AAA under advice of council, and AAA basically said we, they've come to their, you know, they did their assessment, and that's the amount of the damage. They felt it was an excessive amount. Our recourse at this time is to go to small claims, which is a $5,000, is a $5,000 limit. So we would process, and the total amount is $4,077.45. So we would just ask for authorization for staff to proceed to file a claim with small claims.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Hearing none, is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Hearing none, do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
I'll go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm over approval of the item.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. No further discussion, please cast your vote. Steve, please read the results.
That passes on a four zero vote, thank you.
Okay, our next item of new business is the draft environmental impact report for the Trails at San Diego Creek Project. Staff, would you please give the staff report?
Before I make my report, I want to, City Attorney.
Yeah, so FYI, I'm an attorney at Rattan and Tucker. I found out yesterday that one of my fellow partners is representing the developer on this project. So I have, I have not participated in this, and, but I, and I cannot participate moving forward. So with that declaration of a potential conflict, I will sit here and be quiet. Perfect attorney, perhaps. The, and just, as, since I'm not a council member, usually, a council member in these situations have to leave the dais and leave as staff, we don't have to do that. So if you want me to leave, I can go if you wish, or I can just sit here.
Pledge of the counsel.
Stay here.
Item number 16 is the draft environmental impact report for the Trails of San Diego Creek Project. We received notice of availability of the draft, and that notice indicated, and that was submitted, I don't know what the date is, anyway, the bottom line, the comments are due by April 9th. The public comment period began on February 23rd, it ends on April 9th at 5:30 PM. So given the timeframes involved, I've worked with staff, and Ray will walk through a little bit of the EIR, and Akram is here as well. I believe there's a member of the public would also like to be able to answer, speak up. But basically, this is the property to the east of us, and it is a proposal for 129 units. That's on San Diego, East 6118, East San Diego Canyon, City of Orange. We are in proximity, so we have some impacts on us, obvious, for obvious reasons, I'll walk through, just from a point.
For the benefit of the public, is that the cor, is that the corner of Cannon and San Diego, or is it the Sully Miller Ranch? For the benefit of the people watching, so they know what property we're talking about.
It is the Sully Miller property.
It's the Sully Miller property, so it's not the corner where the gases.
It's across from the horse stables there, the riding ring.
With the dirt.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure everyone knows.
So the process would be, is we've offered a draft here, and we would look for direction from the council to give us direction, to allow us to make changes in any draft that you would like, and we could still meet the April 9th timeframe with room to spare. So tonight is an opportunity for you to give us direction. Ray will walk you through, Ray and Akram will walk you through and answer any questions, and I believe an individual from Mayberry Ranch is here, would also be like to speak up and give you a perspective from their, from their perspective. I have had conversations and also invited and indicated to both the City of Orange and Orange Park Acres that we were having this discussion this evening. They have not opted to attend, but they knew that we were doing it, and they were available to see. Our, our draft is online, so they were able to pull it up, but I have not received any comments on that. So Ray and Akram, I guess, Ray, why don't you go ahead and read it?
We're happy to answer any questions. A lot of the, a lot of concerns we had, comments that were generated, were related to the use of Villa Park Road as a result of this project, should it go through. You know, there was, there was absent discussion about the, in the traffic analysis anyways, of the use of Villa Park Road for construction and post-construction. So most of the comments were focused on, on traffic impacts, noise, hazards, and hazard material, because they're going to be doing soil remediation on the site, so the contaminated soil is going to have to go, go somewhere, and more than likely, it'll, it'll travel through the city on Villa Park Road.
And our concern there is not the, so much the contaminated material, it's the weight of the trucks.
Exactly.
Traveling, what, 70 trucks a day, if you will, going through Villa Park Road.
Correct.
Right, when were these numbers generated? I'm very concerned about underreporting the possibility, and these numbers are huge, but when were these numbers actually accounted for? And what are these approximations?
Okay, yeah, I, let me understand, are you, there was a question regarding the traffic?
The 66,000 truck trips, the 700,000 cubic yards of new clean materials, the 1.1 million cubic yards of material. When were that, when was that estimate provided?
Those are estimates is mainly for the grading remediation.
When, when? Was that recently, or was that a few years ago?
Well, part of it was, already was entitled in 2010 as part of.
So you're telling me eight years ago. Eight. Eight years ago, correct?
That's the estimated how much grading and remediation that is be required in order to get that site ready for development.
So there's two elements on the traffic. There's the grading and construction traffic, and then there is the project traffic upon completion, when it's occupied. So the numbers, I believe, for the occupancy were somewhat dated as well, Akram?
No, the, the traffic trip generation, they estimated that the 129 dwelling units would generate approximately a little bit over 1,200 trips per day. Now, what they did is, they made an adjustment, is that since the site already exists and it generates traffic, even though it's not, it's.
It's a minimal amount, though. Extremely minimal.
According to them, that there were some traffic counts were done at the time when the site was in operation, and it generated a little bit close to 700 trips per day. And so they subtracted that amount from the 1,200 trips, and they claimed that they, the net increase is only 542. And that's one of the items that we've, have concerns regarding that, because it's a, it's been vacant for quite a long time, and we don't believe that it is, the adjustment should be taken and the trips be deducted from, from there.
Can we back up for just a second? This was a piece of property that came to the city a couple of years ago, if I remember right, was going to be a retirement community at one particular time, if I remember correctly. Then there was also going to be a sports park on it. This has gone over, you know, there's been several years that it's gone to the planning commission, and it's, Orange has passed it, and they've reversed it, and it's been in litigation. So when we're talking, this is a piece of property they want to develop, obviously. 129 units, what kind of units are we talking about? Single-family homes, million-dollar homes, well, million doesn't go far in this city, but large, large lot homes, townhomes, apartments, do we have any idea?
Our understanding that they are single-family homes.
Okay, single, is there a sports park? Is there, it's a large piece of property.
There is no sports park.
There is no sports park.
Orange has indicated that's not part of it.
And has that passed their planning commission already? Is that, where is it in the city of, where is it in their planning commission? So we have an idea what we're responding to.
Okay, well, they're preparing a, the environmental document in order for the planning commission to review it and decide if they want to approve the project or not.
And what's different about this versus the last time the planning commission did approve?
That was, at that time, it had 450 high-density project at that time, and they settled on 395, so this is a different, a far different number. This is 129 at this time.
So there's still a lot of vacant land. That's a huge number, 129 to 450.
It's open space. And it is being proposed that the rest of the property to remain as an open space. So only 129, they're developing 129 dwelling units.
So that, that open space is bothersome, because that open space can turn, well, can turn into a sports park, which will increase your traffic count and so on. Now, this is the City of Orange, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we don't have a track map, so that's something that's important. We don't have a track map, so we can't say how they're going to be configured, or any of those signs. Now, it's not mandatory, Rick Ado reminded me, that the EIR does not require a track map, but we don't have one, so we can't, it's one of the challenges that you don't, when you don't have something like that.
Yeah, I reviewed the, both the draft environmental impact report and the traffic appendix, and I believe I reviewed the noise appendix as well. And it's important to note that the analysis does not assess the impacts on Villa Park. It doesn't assess the traffic impacts on Villa Park, it doesn't address the noise impacts. And if we've got 1,200 trucks per day going through Villa Park, that's, imagine that, 150 trucks per hour. It's a lot of traffic. And it does not assess the impacts on our intersections, doesn't assess the impacts on our school, children, pedestrians, trying to get across Villa Park Road. It just ignores Villa Park. Also, it does not identify the location of either the disposal site for the fill that needs to be disposed of, nor the source of material that they proposed to import to fill the, you know, the remaining hole. So there are a lot of questions that are unanswered, and one of the items in the staff report is some requested mitigations. One of the mitigations that staff has proposed is not allowing traffic to go through Villa Park Road, because it's, you know, on both sides covered by residential, but request that it be, that any traffic, construction-related traffic in particular be routed down San Diego Canyon Road, perhaps through State Route 241 or some other direction, so as to mitigate the potential impacts on our community. But there's, I think a question was raised about the, when were the traffic counts conducted? Well, I believe the traffic counts, as I recall correctly, or if I recall correctly, were done in 2010 or 2011 during the depths of our recent depression, and I suspect traffic was, during that period of time, was reduced from what it is currently. So I think, you know, it, it may be appropriate to request that the traffic study be redone and also expanded to include Villa Park.
Absolutely.
And be revised or. And be revised or expanded to identify alternative traffic routes to minimize impacts on residential communities, particularly those in Villa Park.
Yeah, and I see this, I mean, we certainly have a short-term issue with the traffic, and I say short-term during their, their production, which would just be, it's their property, I understand it, the trucks have to drive on the streets. And certainly, if they can, if we can work it out where they go around, that would benefit our city. But I'm looking at long-term, and long-term, a hundred-and-twenty-nine units. It's a hundred-and-twenty-nine families with, you know, spouses and children. And the impact there has a positive and a negative. It's a, it's a great positive for our Ralphs, which would give us some income, and I would like that. On the other hand, those students would, impact would be going to our junior high, also would be going to our high school.
Correct.
And that is certainly an impact. And now, those, those numbers might change after the Orange High is renovated. We might have some, you know, lessons, but those, that's a lot of people to be coming through a very small street and down Taft Avenue. And we need to really be very concerned here. And anytime I hear open space, although I like open space, I do know that developers don't like open space, so we really don't know what that open space is going to be. And it would be nice to have a little bit more. If we could at least negotiate them taking, taking the different route, that would be great. And allowing us to know, knowing how many people are going to travel through, I don't think it's going to stop this project from going. The City of Orange has been trying to develop it for so long, or the developers have been trying for so long. We need to just find a way to lessen the impact on our roads, unless they're going to pay for the roads. And is that an option? Are they going to, you know, can they, can the developers have some sort of a fee to pay for the roads for the impact of a hundred-and-twenty-nine homes coming in?
Well, I think what the process, and Ray or Akram, correct me if I'm wrong, we offer comments, they have to address those comments, and then we have a right to comment on what they address, et cetera. So, there's a process here. So, what we're doing is raising these as concerns. And we, we would not necessarily be negotiating with anybody at this point. We, like a number of other bodies, would provide our input. And so, our input includes this traffic noise and those things you see here, the grading and those types of things. So, subject to their response, their mitigation, they may come back and say, well, we've negotiated a deal, we're going this way. So, it would not be an issue for us at that point. The EIR becomes unacceptable and our comments would change down the road type of thing. But I think this is an initial comment period of the draft, correct?
That's correct.
And I think too, I think it'd be timely to hear from Mayberry.
Well, just before that, it's also notable that this project has been proceeding along for some period of time. And Villa Park was not invited into the scoping meetings or any of the preliminary meetings towards the development of this draft EIR. We just got, you know, alerted to this a couple of weeks ago.
Right, correct.
So, you know, that, that's a real concern for us as a community, and-
Although it's been public, because I brought it up with the city. I've been watching it for the last few years, so, because we did comment on it a few years ago.
That was a prior project.
So, it has been, it hasn't been hidden, I want to say. They didn't invite us, but the project hasn't been hidden.
Yeah, but I think, you know, had they invited us, we would have raised the issues about the traffic and routing of traffic. And I'm sure that our city would have insisted on identifying alternatives, such as alternative traffic routes. And of course, perhaps insisted on knowing, well, where do you plan on, you know, we're talking about a 1.1 million cubic yards of material. Where are you going to get rid of the waste? Where are you going to import the fill? You know, where's this all coming from? And, and one would expect that the draft EIR would have addressed the impacts of those, of, you know, the excavation disposal of the, that fill as well. But that's not, not really our concern, but it seems like the, the draft EIR is, has some additional room to go, or space to go.
So, what are you looking, are you just looking for our comments here? And I mean, this is, these are great, you've got some great, in our issues, or?
Well, what we'd like to do is, we've given you a draft. If you'd like some changes, amendments, add additions, or whatever, now's the time to tell us, and we can incorporate that. So, we hit the timeframe for April 9th. It's imperative that we respond by April 9th and go on record. I think that's, that's a critical element here.
I think all the comments that Councilwoman Fasenelli and Mayor Colacott mentioned, as well as just overall traffic trying to get from the toll road via Santiago to Cannon up and over to the 91. I mean, so many people use that as an arterial transition or shortcut that any time around four o'clock on just about any given day, it is a nightmare. It is a, it takes you all the way back to Orange Park Acres, and I'm not sure that they have meaningfully addressed that consideration. And that absolutely needs to be addressed.
So, what, I think, specifically, we have the three-and-a-half-page draft letter that we've, we've identified pretty much most of what you've said so far, I believe. If there are other things that we're missing, please let us know. That's what we're asking for, if we want-
Are there any other council comments before I ask the public for comments? Okay.
Sub my piece.
My name's Nick Law, I'm from Mayberry Ranch. Been actively involved in a lot of negotiations going on with this project on behalf of my community and in a working group with the City of Orange, as well as surrounding communities of Orange Park Acres and the reserve. Spoke to Mr. Franks, he asked me to come and see if you folks had any questions and if I had any comments. I would like to address two comments, or a few comments first off. Looking at the traffic study, we two agree that it's going to be closer to 1,290 trips per day for a development of a hundred-and-twenty-nine homes. We also believe that the number of truck, truck trips is going to be closer to seventy-three thousand than the sixty-six thousand that you folks have identified. Couple other things that aren't, that haven't been addressed is that back in the 90s, zoning change occurred on fifteen, 12.6 acres north of Santiago Creek, right adjacent to my community of Mayberry Ranch, and directly adjacent across the street from my house. That was zoned for our 8,000 square foot lots. And the developer has indicated, they own that property as well, that that will be developed if this proposed project or some reiteration of this proposed project does not get approved. And they have identified up to ninety-two homes that can be built in that area. So, whether it's a hundred-and-twenty-nine homes south of the creek or hopefully a number much smaller than that gets approved, there could be up to ninety-two homes built on this property. And so, there is going to be an impact, there are going to be truck trips, there are going to be homes, there are going to be impacts to schools and what have you. It's just a matter of finding the right project that will bring the most benefit and the least impact to all of our cities. And that's part of the things that we're working on with the different groups that I'm involved with, is finding something, the open space. We'd hope several acres, you know, forty to sixty acres will be extensions of Santiago Wilderness Park and what have you, some trails and public benefit included in any project that gets developed. Again, if a project isn't identified that's acceptable to all the parties, they build those homes north of the creek. The rock recycling, crushing and concrete recycling operation would continue. So, there'd be ongoing impacts and mitigations. That said, we believe this draft environmental impact report is deficient on many levels. And I think the issues that your staff has identified are very valid. And all these issues need to be identified. Travel of the trucks, obviously, is a big impact on Villa Park. You reroute it, it'll be a big pact, impact on Orange. So, there's a lot of stakeholders that are going to be impacted by this. And I think it's incumbent on the developer to find the most efficient way to meet the needs of all of our cities, Villa Park included. So, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any-
Who's the developer? Do we have a name?
Milan RX10, I believe it is. But it's a reiteration of one of the Milan companies, whatever LLC or corporation they have set up to identify this. And they have negotiated with us over the last few years. They've gone from the Rio Santiago with, you know, three, four hundred units, some high density or medium density, which the council did approve, City of Orange approved, but was later rescinded. So, we're, Fieldstone was in there. Yeah, Fieldstone was prior to that. There was, I think the last project Fieldstone proposed was a hundred-and-eighty-nine homes with, I think the number went down to fourteen homes north of Santiago Creek, directly adjacent to Mayberry Ranch. So, we're slowly working our way down to a number that hopefully would be acceptable to all parties. And hopefully, we can find something that's going to benefit the city. It's an ISO right now. If they go back to the concrete recycling, it's a huge dust problem for Mayberry Ranch.
Yeah.
And ultimately, let's find the least impact and the best public benefit.
Absolutely. Okay, any other comments, or? Do I have a motion?
Well, I move we approve the staff's recommendations on comments.
I'd like to take the opportunity to second and, but add a little bit to it. I think the staff was a little bit pinched for time. I know just from my review of the draft environmental impact report and the traffic study, just those two elements were a thousand pages. And so, staff is really pressed to try to get out a comment letter and on a pretty short fuse, in addition to maintaining other, other duties. Could we approve the staff report and ask that they go back through the letter and maybe clean it up, clean up some of the text a little bit?
Sure.
Okay. If that's acceptable.
I thought that was my motion, wasn't it?
Oh, it was.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So, I would just ask for clarification. So, when we do that, we would have authorization to submit the letter?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, that's, I want to make sure that's clear.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
When you do submit it, would you provide a copy to council at that time? So, we don't have to wait till the next month, if you could do that, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm not hearing any further discussion, please cast your vote.
That passes on a four-zero vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will discuss the city manager report.
Item number seventeen is the city manager report, and it is continually updated on a monthly basis. You'll see the red and green coding on the far right, it's completed. We have been able to complete additional projects. The only item not significantly that I can point to, and I would like to point everybody to the far back counter that now exists that didn't exist before. So, our efforts to contender, to update and modernize this community room have been taking another step forward, and we will continue to do so. So, that's just a material observation I wanted just everyone to see.
Thank you, I think it looks excellent.
And there are lights back there that accent. Now, there'll be another item that will follow up that long ago, Councilman Pitts had asked that there be a tribute to the former council members. So, in this room somewhere that could be done, so on the right-hand column, right-hand back wall, there'll be that tribute. On the left-hand, there'll be a tribute to those served in the armed forces from Villa Park. So, those are in process, that's sort of the next step. And that's sort of why the accent lighting and things you'll see on there. But those will be wall types of things that we'll be able to see and make this room truly a representative, professional council chamber for the city Villa Park. So, I would be prepared to answer any questions, and staff are here to help.
Any comments or questions by council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much for the informative reports. We now have individual council member information items. Councilman Nelson, do you have any?
Yes, I have a couple of things. One thing, I did attend a private tour with supervisor Spitzer with the new Orange County Animal Care Center, which is really amazing places, ten acres, a lot better than what the current one is. Also attended Villa Park Annual Home Security Fair that they had here in the council chamber last Saturday?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, last Saturday. And also attended pension forum, which John Morlack spoke at. You know, he usually gives a good presentation. He, he was up to speed there as well. But one of the other things that I found out there was the Ken Domer, former city manager, he is city manager of Fullerton now, gave presentation of Fullerton, and they are really in terrible shape. And it just goes to show that past council and the present council, how physically responsible they've been here. Even though we have a very small budget, we're in good financial situation compared to many other cities in Orange County. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilwoman Fasenelli?
All right, well, we had our annual composting giveaway through Republic Services, and that was a wonderful day. We were able to empty the truck with, before the rain came. So, we had a lot of people, if you went out there, your garden's going to be looking very good this summer. So, I have to thank Republic Services, we always enjoy that event. As far as the city goes, I did mention that we had an evacuation seminar. It was attended to by a lot of residents. And in fact, those who missed, it's my understanding that they have been calling the city and they want another one. Those are the type of items that we don't have all the time, because people won't come all the time. But at least in the next year, we do know that people were interested. It was not about what to pack, it was about where to go and the differences. So, we did enjoy that. Again, as far as seminars and town halls, this Thursday, we do have animal care coming out and fish and game, I think, coming out also. And we will have a town hall on coyotes and what to do with them, what to do when you see them, how to detour them. And there'll be some items, you know, what to do with your pets and, you know, what, how to live, you know, with coyotes, for lack of a better word. And we do need some education, and that will be this Thursday at six o'clock. And it'll be here. I did also attend the Orange County Animal Care Tour with Todd Spitzer and with city manager Franks, and Nelson was there also. And we did go to the ribbon-cutting ceremony also. It's absolutely beautiful facility. I have to say that I certainly was not somebody who liked going to the pound. It was dirty and it smelled, and that's just, that's just how it was. This is not dirty, nor does it smell. And I think that if you want to adopt an animal, they've really given you a place to go to adopt an animal. And it could be a bunny, it could be a chicken, it could be a cat or a dog, but it is a very nice place to go, and I suggest that, you know, you take a trip down there, actually. I also attended an event here in Villa Park for the Special Olympics. There was a resident, Dr. Eric Ross and his wife Corinne, hosted a Special Olympic ceremony here to bring awareness to the Special Olympics. We do have quite a few residents that do participate in that. And they were wanting to bring awareness to Villa Park to let us know that we do have a lot of students that go to our high schools and a lot of residents that do participate in that. And that was a very lovely event, and hopefully, we'll be bringing more to the council so that everybody can get a little bit more involved in that. I attended the OUSD School Board meeting. I attended that not necessarily for the city, that was as the chairperson of the Oversight Committee to report on that. And at the time that I did do that, we actually had some residents there that were concerned about safety at our schools, that were speaking at the schools and offering some suggestions. Since the high schools are being renovated, they were offering a lot of suggestions as to the ingress and, you know, the gates and how to get in, whether or not there should be armed guards there. And it was just nice to see that our residents, who, some of them are older, they don't have children certainly in this, in these schools, are very concerned about that. And it was nice to see that they came and that they offered their, their public comment at the time. So, that was a very good, a very good event. And that's it. I wish everyone a happy Easter.
Thank you. Councilman Mercini?
On March 15th and March 22nd, as I previously mentioned, I attended the Orange County Fire Authority. And we welcomed in a new chief for Orange County. I think he's going to set the right tone, and hopefully, we can provide the best fire service possible for our residents. And I would invite everybody to come to the meeting this Thursday, the 29th. And then a couple of other upcoming meetings would be the Public Safety and Law Enforcement Advisory Committee meetings. Assuming that Councilmember Pitts can clear his schedule on the 9th, we will be having that meeting. And then the LEAC is definitely set for Monday, the 9th, at, I believe, at 6:00 PM here. And please come share your concerns, share your thoughts, share your recommendations with the committee. And one last thing, Villa Park Little League, they literally hit it out of the park. It was such an honor to be invited and to attend. an honor to be invited and to attend and see so many friends and volunteers at the Taste of Villa Park this past weekend. It just, it was particularly impressive for my wife. She's extremely busy, working mom, high-stress job. For her to come out and share an evening with her husband and see other couples, some that are younger, some that are older, some are the same age, some with kids in the same schools and even different schools, and to be really accepted and feel part of the community, it was fantastic. And I take my hats off to Sam Stremmick, to Matt Hindren, to Crystal Miles, to all the volunteers that made that possible, to all the vendors that made that possible, to Billy Scaffington and his staff at The Post and Rockwells. And I would invite everybody to attend next year. I think that you will not be disappointed. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I also attended the Taste of Villa Park function, and it was, it was a great event. Had a great time. Only complaint was I ate too much, but that's my fault. On February 28th, I was invited by Dr. Hanson to come, our new superintendent for the Orange Unified School District, to come to our office and meet. And our meeting was productive and positive, and I assured her that the residents here in Villa Park are proud of our schools and our service organizations actively, organizations actively support the schools and the programs. Noting that approximately 90% of the students at the schools are not from Villa Park, I encouraged her to also assist us in Villa Park in encouraging service organizations and businesses in Orange to join with those in Villa Park in the support of the students and activities and programs at the schools here in Villa Park. To promote closer coordination between Villa Park and OUSD, we agreed to meet monthly. In addition, I invited Dr. Hanson or her representatives from her office to provide monthly updates at our council meetings, similar to what we get from our library and the sheriff and fire department. I think that will be real helpful since, as we've all noted, that our population virtually doubles during the school day. And we've got some major projects going on with Orange Unified School District here in Villa Park. So now's a good time for us to, you know, start having monthly updates and better communications. Although Dr. Hanson was unable to attend the council meeting tonight, she will provide an update at the April council meeting. On March 9th, I attended the Holocaust Art and Writing Contest sponsored by the Rogers Center for Holocaust Education at Chapman College and the 1939 Society. This is a prestigious international contest with entrants from as far away as South Africa. And each year, more than 5,000 students from over 100 public and private schools participate. It was noteworthy that every school in Yorba Linda Placentia Unified School District entered this contest. The contest teaches students about the Holocaust while providing a unique opportunity to engage with survivor's testimony and become witnesses to their experience. There were a number of survivors that were present at this, this awards assembly. This year, Villa Park Elementary entered the contest, and although they did not win an award, they were certainly winners by participating. And next year, I would encourage OUSD to match Yorba Linda Placentia by encouraging entries by all schools within the Orange Unified School District. Let's see, actually, it's quite an active month. I also attended the grand opening of the animal shelter. And like Councilwoman Fassinelli, I was very impressed with that facility, particularly after seeing the old 1941 facility that we've used previously and seeing the new one. It was just two ends of the extremes. And I think it provides a much better environment for the animals that are there, but also I think it will, you know, just having such a fresh, uplifting atmosphere will encourage more adoption. So I'm, and also during the ceremony, our city manager was recognized for his work in championing that facility in his prior professional life. I'd really like to compliment him publicly for such a great facility. It's beautiful. Let's see. And this morning, I attended the grand opening of the Mental Health Inpatient Center at the Children's Hospital of Orange County, or CHOC. And this facility was championed by Pastor Rick Warren of the Salbach Church and his wife. And it treats patients ages 3 to 17 and provides the only mental health beds in all of Orange County for children younger than 12. So this was a desperately needed facility. After the ceremony, I participated in a tour of the center, which was built with two primary concerns. First, the safety for the children, and second, optimal, providing a optimal healing environment. And it's a very bright facility, open and spacious. It's kind of like the, you know, both this animal control facility and the, this CHOC facility, it's like, Orange County is really stepping up in becoming a leader and developing state-of-the-art facilities for our communities. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting on, oh, let's see. First of all, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of three former Villa Park City Council members who passed, recently passed away. Carol Kuanami, who was on council during the 1980s, Bob McGowan, I believe he was also in the 80s, and Bob, or excuse me, Bill Odlem. And is there a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting on April 24th, 2018 at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.